We want to welcome all of you for coming tonight and helping us get boost to our organization that has been doing quite a few things in our community for the past few years. I've been in on it fortunately since it started. And I think it's one of the best things that can happen to a community when you have a Main Street program. The National Trust is behind this idea and has worked well in many communities. And the Missouri Main Street Connection is a great organization to work with. I want to tell you a little bit about what the St. Genevieve Downtown Renewal Project has done through the years. I think many of you are familiar with the Fourth Friday Art Walk. That's something that is sponsored by the Downtown Renewal Project. Many people think it's the Art Guild project, but it isn't. We do that. It's a fun outing, people from out of town love it, people in town love it. If you haven't been out to take advantage of it, you should do that. Fourth Friday of every month between February and November. Another thing that we have done is the plein air event in the fall. We attract artists from all over the area. And that has been going on. We took it over three, I think it's about three years ago that the Downtown Renewal became the sponsor of that event. Another thing that I'm sure many of you are familiar with is the Chocolate Walk. That is sponsored by the Downtown Renewal. And it's great for the merchants, it's great for the downtown. It's something that a lot of people really look forward to and put on their calendars. And now we have something new that we are becoming sponsors of the French Festival. It's going to be taking place next weekend, week from Saturday. Mark your calendars to join in on that, it's going to be fun. And another new event that we are sponsoring in conjunction with the Bolduc Museum is an open air market. The Bolduc Museum purchased the old first bank building on Market. And the parking lot in the back is being used for an open air market. Hearing on a tradition in St. Genevieve that started 200 years ago. And people can come to sell their produce from their gardens. They can sell handcrafted items, they can sell antiques. And it costs $15 for from Saturday and Sunday. So it's a good bargain and we hope to have it well attended. Something for people from out of town to see. We have, the Bolduc is selling their homemade bread and their plants and herbs. We also have a big project going on that is very important to our community. And that is the River Gage Park up by the creek where the gauge is showing the level of the floodwaters in 1993. It was 20 years ago. And we're going to make a park there. And we're now in the process, the sale of the shirts tonight, the funds from that, the sale of the posters goes to that. So that is something that we're working on and designing now. And our design committee is working hard on that. I think it'll be something that's very important to our community. We don't want to ever forget what our volunteers did to save our town. And we have just little things that we do in the community. When the merchants have the Gould's Night Out, the Moonlight Madness. We have contributed by paying for advertising and that type of thing. So it helps the merchants. It's so important to keep a vibrant economic community. It helps everyone, every resident. If our little downtown is doing well, it helps everyone, not just merchants. We want to keep people from getting in their car and heading out of town. We want them to come down and see what we've got. So we have, in relation to that, we have been partnering with the downtown merchants. They have a meeting, I think it's about once a month, the merchants get together and members from the Downtown Renewal group join in. Find out what they need and what's going on and their ideas about things that will help the businesses. We are also doing window display contests. If you've seen, the stained glass shop made us beautiful stained glass plaques that we hang in the winner's window. At different events, there's Valentine's Day, the Garden Walk and different times. We give prizes to the best decorated window. And if you will notice, I'm sure you've all seen the t-shirts. The beautiful design on the bag was done by Rob Pinkson from St. Genevieve. His mother used to work for me and I've known him since he was a little kid. He's been a Marine, just got back from Afghanistan and entered our contest and was the winner. And we're so proud of him and we think it's a beautiful design. So, still giving everyone a shout out. Now, I would like to introduce two members of the Missouri Main Street Connection that are going to present our program tonight. We have Keith Winkle and Caitlin Bretherton. And Keith, would you take it from here?
Sure. I'm hoping not to use the microphone. Can everyone hear me? Okay, because I like to move around. So, as Mary said, thank you, Mary. I'm excited to be in St. Genevieve. I was here five years ago when I was with Excelsior Springs and their Main Street program. We had a quarterly training here. It was actually on arts. The Missouri Arts Council was here and did a presentation. And just fell in love with the community, stayed with it at breakfast, so I'm glad to be back. I have with me Caitlin Bretherton. She is an intern in our office this summer from Southeast Missouri State University. She's majoring in Historic Preservation with a minor in Management. Business management or Historic Preservation? Management. Okay. She joined our office on Monday, so she drove from Cape Girardeau to Branson, our offices. And then I brought her all the way back out here today, so we're getting some mileage with her. So, welcome her also as she's helping us for the summer. I want to tell you a little bit about myself real quick, just so you kind of have a background. I have lived in a lot of different places, some great Main Street programs. Actually, board members, please sit down, this is a four hour presentation. Grab a seat. I'm hoping to get everyone out of here by eight, eight thirty at least, so we'll move through this quickly. I was born in Jefferson City, Missouri. Great downtown, state capital. It's had its ups and downs as a downtown, as a Main Street community, but kind of on the upswing now. In fact, I saw a Facebook post that they're working on putting an independent movie here for downtown in one of the old buildings, showing independent movies. So really kind of a cool project that they're working on. Went to school at Northwest Missouri State University in Maryville. They are considering joining the Main Street organization. Going through our affiliate grant program, which I'll talk about a little later. So I will be excited to work with them if they come into the program. After college, went to Omaha, Nebraska. How many have been to Omaha before? Okay, great downtown, the Old Market. I think that place has always been popping as a destination, preserving old buildings, taking some old manufacturing buildings and turning them into retail and residential stuff. So a great place, enjoyed living there. Then I went to Las Vegas. You're probably saying, what has taken me to all these communities? Well, I worked in the hotel business. So I have 25 years in hospitality industry. And I love the aspects of being able to move around a lot. So I love old Vegas, the old cowboy downtown. It went through some very troubling times and they recently have done some things with the area to revitalize it. Then I moved to Marietta, Ohio. Probably my second favorite place that I've lived. It's a riverboat town, have you been there? Yes, awesome. Did you stay at Malatia? Uh, no. Now, okay. Why I worked at Malatia, this hotel right here. 120 something rooms, dated back to the early 1900s. On the river, the Skir wheelers, the Mississippi Queen, American Queen, and Delta Queen who stuck there. And I would have access to get on the boat as a hotel employee, so I have a blackstone. I love that community. Have a great, they have a great downtown organization. And I helped with another little community across a little river. So I love the area, enjoyed living there. Then I moved to St. Simon's Island, Georgia. Not much of a downtown, have you been there too? Wow, are you in Los Angeles? St. Simon's Island, Georgia, not much of a downtown. So I really, not much there, the US. Some great old hotels though, same sort of hotel, but not much. Then I lived in Atlanta. The National Main Street Conference will be in Atlanta next year. So that will be interesting to see that perspective. So great placemaking going on in Atlanta, places that people want to be and congregate. So interesting, we'll see what the conference does next year. Lived in Alexandria, Virginia. Loved Alexandria also, loved the DC area. Tons of history and revitalization there, of course. Alexandria, the American colonial period, so a lot of revitalization of different places. I can find a picture when I'm putting together of the old Navy Yard that they've turned into some artist galleries and stuff. Now it's a great adaptive reuse project. Then I moved to Kansas City. I was tired of the East Coast, I wanted to get back to the Midwest and Midwest hospitality. So I moved to Kansas City, worked at a hotel at the airport, but Country Club Plaza in Kansas City. Beautiful development, the first outdoor shopping center ever created in the United States. Beautiful architecture and still going today. And then I went to work in Excelsior Springs, Missouri, at the Elms. Has anybody been to the Elms? How long ago?
13, 30 years.
30 years, okay, how long?
Over 20 years.
20 years, okay. Well, the last thing I helped them do was rebrand through a $17 million renovation that took place last year. It's 150 free guest rooms, a 10,000 square foot spa, 10,000 square feet of meeting space. Trying to get to the State Main Street Conference that next year, so working on that. Great building, great history. Truman stayed there, Alfred Hogan stayed there. It's haunted. I was the honorary host for Ghost Hunters. That was one of the other last things I did before I left there, so lots of great experiences. But this is what brought me to Main Street. When I was in Excelsior Springs, I was the general manager of the hotel. And a group of folks downtown wanted to save their downtown, wanted to revitalize it. So they approached me as the general manager of the hotel and said, will you help us? Will you be on the board? I said, sure, I've been involved in other communities, that would be great. So we formed a board, started meeting, started brainstorming, started putting things together. Thing is, we didn't know about Main Street at the time. We didn't know about Missouri Main Street, we didn't know about the Main Street philosophy. So we were kind of living along. And then we became aware of Main Street and the four point approach and the four committees and the philosophy and what it meant and what it could do. We revitalized our organization to reflect that Main Street organization and we took off. So I was a board member for four years. We reached our capacity as an all-volunteer organization. And it was time to hire a Main Street manager, an executive director. And I said, no, I'd like that. I've done hotels for a while, I think I'd like to do something different. So I was hired as the executive director of the Downtown Excelsior Partnership. I did that for four years. Three years of that four years, I worked for the Elms and downtown. I couldn't believe the Elms. So I worked two full-time jobs and it got to be too much. So the last year I just worked for downtown and I had a little bit of trouble hiding. And they were ready to move on with marketing efforts. So helped start an organization. So I love to come talk about Main Street and what it can do for a community. Because we've done that in Excelsior Springs and we do it across the state, we do it across the nation using the Main Street philosophy. That's a picture of our downtown. I still refer to it as our downtown and my hotel still, so I'll do that through the session. I'll always be ambassador for them. So Missouri Main Street. Our mission is to provide communities with knowledge and tools to economically and physically revitalize downtowns. That's our mission. We are a resource. We do that as being part of the National Main Street Center, as Mary mentioned, part of the National Trust for Historic Preservation. And we work to ensure that downtowns are essential elements of the sense of community, the cultural heritage, and to the total economy of the individual citizens of the state. And this is all done with an emphasis on historic preservation. It's all the basis, it's the foundation of it. So it makes it different. Our primary purpose of our local program is to ensure the long-term success of the downtowns by creating, educating, training, and empowering. A comprehensive, professional, volunteer-based downtown revitalization organization. Again, that's where a resource helps the communities to help the organizations in the state be successful. So that's our sole purpose. So I'm here tonight. There are over, this, my notes say 1800 when this was put together, but there's over 2,000 communities throughout the country now using the Main Street philosophy. So it spreads all the way across the country. And this is an old map, there aren't any dots in Montana, but Montana is now practicing Main Street in a couple of its communities all the time. So it's a big network. So let's move down to the Main Street and what makes it happen. When the folks from St. Genevieve called our office and asked us to come in and present tonight, it was with the premise of creating a new sense of excitement about Main Street in St. Genevieve. A renewal, a revitalization, so to speak. St. Genevieve has had some great successes with Main Street, many of you are probably aware of that. And so they want to continue that success and they want to build on that success. So that's why we're here tonight. So let's talk about why Main Streets are important. And many of those apply to St. Genevieve. The commercial districts in our Main Streets are prominent employment centers. And many of our Main Streets, if you would take all of the businesses within the downtown district and add up the number of employees, it would rival that of a manufacturing plant in that community. But people don't think of it that way. They think of it as a lot of small businesses, but put it together as one entity and it equals that of a manufacturer. You know how much communities spend to bring a manufacturer to their communities? Well, some of those resources should probably go to Main Street because of this fact. Commercial districts are a reflection of the community. It's the heart and soul of the community. When you envision, say, St. Charles, Missouri, what are you envisioning? It's typically that downtown, correct? Same thing with St. Genevieve. When I think of St. Genevieve, I think of your downtown district. So it's the heart of the community, it's what people remember and think of. It's also a significant portion of the community's tax base. There's a lot of infrastructure, there's a lot of investment in downtown. The businesses create sales tax, the buildings create property tax. So it's a big tax base, part of the tax base of the community. The traditional commercial district is an ideal location for independent businesses. Typically, the rents are a little more economical in downtown. Great opportunity for entrepreneurs and business owners to come in and create or establish whatever business they have in their mind. It's a great incubator for businesses. I think St. Genevieve does a wonderful job of that. And with this one also, many of our Main Street districts are major tourism destinations. I need to be thought that way. Also, Main Streets provide important civic forums where members of the community can congregate. Many events take place downtown. But on a smaller scale, there's restaurants and coffee shops that people talk to their neighbors and have conversations if they're going about their neighbor's business. Concerts, art events, those sorts of things where people can come and share those experiences with their neighbors. Also, the commercial district represents a huge private and public investment. I mentioned earlier, infrastructure. The city has invested a lot in downtown, the streets, tours, the electric, sidewalk, turf, all those things, as well as the property owners in building the buildings and the facilities in the downtown district. So why establish a downtown revitalization organization? Well, all those things we said before. All of those things are reasons why a downtown should be revitalized and shouldn't be abandoned. And as communities are looking at those efforts and looking at who should be involved in those efforts, it should be everyone in the community because everyone's going to benefit from that revitalized district. So who makes it happen? You make it happen. There's a saying that I, a session that I was at at a conference says, "The people we have been waiting to save us is us." Nobody's going to come riding in on a white horse and say, "St. Genevieve." It's the people in this room, it's the people in this community that are going to do it. So how do you do that? Well, Main Street lays this out and that's the great framework that the National Main Street Approach provides, is that framework. And it's through the four points. Have you guys heard of the four points, four committees? Probably once I start saying them, you're going to hear, Mary mentioned some of them earlier. So we'll bring those back into the forefront. It's through the four-point approach. It's a methodology to revitalize older traditional Main Street districts, business districts. We had someone call our office a few weeks ago that wanted to create a new Main Street organization, a new Main Street in a community. They wanted to build it from scratch and they wanted our help. I'm sorry, we don't do that, you need to call a developer. Our role is the traditional older districts. We don't have anything to do with it anymore. So when you think about Main Streets, when you think about the properties of a successful Main Street, there's four principles at play. One is the physical property, the buildings, the streets. The economic side of it, the business that's transacted. The civic side, bringing people together, reaching consensus, meeting your neighbors, partnerships. And the social side, those conversations, the marketing ethics, positive image, center of activity. So another way to look at that, to pull it into the four-point approach, is you have volunteers or you have people in the community that want to make a difference in their downtown. You have preservation and a grassroots effort at the center. You need something to pull it all together and that's the Main Street Approach. So we have the organization committee. That has to do with the internal workings of the organization. You have the promotions committee, which is the advertising for the events that take place. You have the economic restructuring committee, which is just another way of saying economic development. We'll talk about that in a second. Then you have the design side, the look and feel of downtown. Those four committees correspond to those four quadrants I showed earlier. You have a board of directors providing that momentum and guidance. You have the revitalization process providing the direction. And at some point, we like to have, we like to see a Main Street organization with a director helping pull all those things together and keep things moving forward. So let's talk about the four committees in a little more detail. The design committee, the look and feel of downtown, signage is one of those components. Let's talk about the sods. The sods is a big piece of the design committee in that look and feel. You want to look, you want to look at depth. If you're bringing people to the community, you want them to see something that reflects the character of the community. So here's some examples from Chillicothe, some before and after shops and some renovations that they did. A lot of design committees will provide some incentives, maybe a facade grant, where it's a matching grant to help those property owners in their renovation and their rehabilitation. Chillicothe has a program on that. Blackso Missouri has been doing a lot of facade improvements with their buildings. I don't think you guys have any of those, but you know those communities that put those metal fronts on the top of their buildings in the 70s because they thought it would make their buildings look better? They wanted to look like the shopping malls. Many of those are coming down now and that is an activity that we're involved in. This is a project from Washington, Missouri. The city owned this building in their downtown and wanted to tear it down. The Main Street organization said, wait a minute, we don't like to tear things down, start preservation, remember? And said, let's talk about what are some needs we have in our community. They didn't have a permanent location for their farmer's market. So this property has some space alongside and quite a bit of space in the back. So the city sold it to the Main Street organization, I think for a couple bucks if it wasn't a lot. And the Main Street organization raised the funds and borrowed money to turn this into their permanent farmer's market location and into apartments. So now the landlords helping pay off that renovation through rent. But they now have a permanent location for their farmer's market. They also use it for some other events that they have. And here's kind of a little creative accounting thing they did. The city needed, the city wanted some public restaurants in downtown. So the Main Street organization leases back his first floor space in the public restaurant estate. So the cities helped pay for that renovation also through that lease. So a lot of partners put together to make that. Design committee also goes beyond buildings. Planters, trash, cleanliness, benches, blocks, all of those things have fallen into the design committee. How many people have been to Chillicothe, Missouri? Okay, those up north on Highway 36. Very old community, an accredited Main Street community. They have a building collapse in this space here. So there's a building on the left, there's a building on the right. The thing that Chillicothe is known for is they have a mural artist in their community that draws these beautiful murals on the sides of buildings depicting their history. So they utilized that talent to make this project work. But they needed a space for some outdoor events for concerts, movies, so they created Silver Moon Plaza. A mural on the side. Look at this building, look at what it looked like before. The mural artist drew every brick on the side of that building. And then all the windows have little murals inside them and they sold those windows as sponsorships. So businesses purchased those and did vintage windows of what their business would have been in the 1920s. So there's an old, one of the jewelers bought a window and it's the guy with the jeweler cap on who was working on something. So they turned it into a great space, they got sage there, they got some water features and now they have a place for outdoor activities. All done through donations and sponsorship. I guess this is where there's a will, there's a way to make anything happen. Do what?
The will is strong.
The will is strong, the way is the key. Yep. When you guys are working on a park, I can't wait to see how that develops, gets up to size. So let's move to the economic restructuring committee. Then kind of a fancy or different way of saying economic development. The reason we say economic development is because it is, economic restructuring is economic development plus revitalization or rethinking downtown. Because in the economic restructuring world, it's more important to strengthen, their first role should be strengthen the existing businesses in the community through meetings with the business owners. Maybe a business incubator is a way to do that. But work on strengthening your existing businesses before you start recruiting new ones. And another reason for that is before you even start recruiting, you need to figure out what you need. What is the demand? What is, what does the community want to see in new businesses downtown? So it takes a little while to figure that out first, at first. So strengthen and then recruit. Why downtown economy? Why downtown economy need restructuring? The value of the buildings downtown is based on its economic activity and its real estate. In fact, there's been a correlation together. The real value of downtown buildings depends upon their ability to support commercial activity. So if they're vacant, there's really not much value there. It's the occupied buildings that really come about. So for real estate to increase in value, that's going to be activity which then rents can go up, which then supports the property owner in doing their applications and all those things. So all those things create that activity and create that value. There are some positive economic trends. I know we always hear about the negative stuff, but there are positive economic trends in downtown. There is increased interest in traditional business districts over those new town centers. I don't know what St. Louis has, but in Kansas City, we have Zona Rosa up by the airport, and it's, it's a development that was built to have retail, and then there's a residential up above, and they make it look like the traditional downtown. It's not. There's no history, there's no unique buildings to it, you can tell that it's new. Some of them aren't as walkable as they think they should be, and parking is still, you know, they sell these good parking lots, and, you know, it's not a downtown city building. It's not a downtown metro area. So there is increased interest in traditional business districts over those new town centers. Retail is returning to Main Street. It's coming in a different form. J. C. Penney's Montgomery Market, the way you go off a long time ago, they're not going to have businesses in a traditional downtown. It just doesn't work, that model doesn't work for them. But what's returning to Main Street is a lot of what you have here in St. Genevieve, it's those niche businesses. I use an example in Excelsior Springs. We have a shop that sells Missouri wine, and that's their biggest retail item, the shop they sell. They have the largest selection of Missouri wine in their shop. They have a booming business, they do wine distribution, all these sorts of things connected with wine, but that's their niche and very successful. Of course, all the shopping malls and strip malls are declining. In fact, in Kansas City, they're tearing any of them down. They actually building account centers, interesting. Technology has made location neutral for your business. With the internet, as a small business owner, you can have a storefront anywhere, and you can still get your product wherever it needs to go through internet services. So that has helped in the recent years. Store preservation is increasingly valued, higher than strip malls. Blue Springs, a metro area outside of Kansas City, joined our program through our affiliate grant two years ago, and I went to visit them two weeks ago, and they had three businesses move from a busy highway into their downtown, and those three businesses are reporting double to triple their sales. One of them was located next to a Starbucks, and they're doing better downtown because the folks on the highway aren't interested in stopping and shopping for wine. So it was the wrong location, wrong market for them. It seemed like a great location because there's tons of traffic, but they're doing better in the downtown, which services the community of Blue Springs, not all the people traveling through Blue Springs. So they're all very happy. Main Street property values are increasing, and mixed-use districts are gaining acceptance. Retail, restaurants, bars, evening entertainment, service industries, all mixed together, mixed use is becoming very popular, providing that daytime traffic from those businesses that are located there, the service businesses, and then evening traffic from the restaurants, bars. The next committee would be the promotions committee, easiest to understand, marketing and events. Image for the organization is everything, the promotions committee is responsible for that, in helping change the attitude of downtown. In many of the communities that we go to, people rode off downtown years ago, and we hear people say, "I haven't been downtown in 10 years." We're giving that down there, it's changed. So we're getting that message out there, generating fresh activity, communicating the progress and the achievements of downtown. Image is everything. I love this picture. We are very tired, semi-retired, close Saturday, Sunday, January, and February. It's not a positive message to say. Special events are something Main Streets are very good at producing and a great place for entertainment parks. And why? Because it's centered on community, provide a safe and friendly environment for families, and also part of the community. Car shows, bike races, and 5Ks and 10Ks and half marathon's are becoming very popular these days. Outdoor festivals, contests, cultural events, all those things happen downtown. You guys have quite a few things that happen downtown. We promote downtown by understanding the changing market. As marketers, we're always looking for the new thing, new way to reach people. Who would have thought 10 years ago that you could pass forward to commercial fighting TV? Isn't that awesome? But marketers have to think differently now because of that. Identifying those downtown assets and promoting them. Defining the district's market niche or position. Now, St. Genevieve, you have a lot of artists, and I think that's a bit of your niche, sure. That's a great niche to have. Many communities would love to have what you have here. And also creating new activity. Here's some of the business promotions from other communities that help bring cash register, build a customer base, and promoting that positive. You guys already do a chocolate crawl or chocolate walk, those are popular, ladies night's Fireworks displays, parades, car shows, Halloween trick-or-treating events, war parades. Halloween is a popular time downtown. I think you guys have a Halloween event, right? Yep. Any reason they have a park, right? Wine events and art events are popular in communities. This is in Blue Springs, and then this is one we did in Salt Lake. And you guys do Fourth Fridays. In Kansas City, the big one is First Fridays in downtown Kansas City. So we went with Second Friday, and then I think Lee Summit has One, Two, Three. So art has become very popular in helping in the revitalization of the city downtown. Festivals, and music is always a proud, pleaser, musical thing. All right, the last committee is the organization committee. And I would say it's partly the organization sector, which you can, because it's the nuts and bolts of the organization. It's the people, it's the partnerships, and it's the fun. Mary, you're laughing over there. You make an organization sector.
I said I made it fun, but I always circle.
There you go. Wine always helps, wine and beer, yep. So it's the people, it's the board members, the committee chairs, the volunteers, the people in the community. Bringing those folks to Main Street and showing them why it's important. It's the partnerships, the chamber, the Arts Guild, the city, the county, all those folks, bringing them together. Because you all have, you all have different missions and visions, but there are some similarities within there that make for great partnerships. And then it's the funding. You have to have money to do some of these things. So move back to, you make it all happen. I think I said this earlier, it's the people in this room, it's the people in the community, but more specifically, property owners, business owners, city officials, students, schools, the utility companies, the banks. All of those folks need to be involved in Main Street. Because it's a quality of life issue, it's a pride issue, it's a part of the community, everyone should be involved because this place matters. Pardon me. There's eight guiding principles for the Main Street organization. Okay. There's eight guiding principles, let me go through these quickly. Comprehensible. You can't focus on just one piece of the four points. You have to be focusing on all four, and that makes a successful organization. We have some Main Street organizations that love to throw a big party and do the promotion side of things, but if they're not taking care of the others, it doesn't make any sense. If you don't have occupied buildings, and if you don't have good design in the downtown, when people get there, they're going to be disappointed. So you have to have all four. It's incremental. It's not going to happen overnight. It took a long time for many of our Main Streets to get to the shape they're in now, decades. And so it's going to take some time for that to happen, but it's incremental. And after the first year, when you look back, you go, wow, okay. After the second year, you look back and you go, wow, look at what we've accomplished. And you keep moving forward, but it's all of a sudden. It's community-driven, and I'm excited about the number of people that are here. You guys should be very proud of yourselves for coming. And I challenge you all, when you're finished, when we're finished with this tonight, to go tell your neighbor about what you heard, what was important to you. But it's community-driven, it can't just be four or five people, it has to be the community that's here. It's a public and a private effort. City, the county, they have to be involved also. Build on your existing assets, and you have some great assets here. So promote those, utilize those, send that out. Whatever you do, make sure you're going in for quality, because people are always watching what you're doing. And if you have an event or something that flops, they're going to focus on that, they're not going to focus on the successful pieces of it. So make sure that you're always doing a quality event and quality product. And change is good, it might be a great change. I'm sorry, folks, but it's not going to be what it used to be. As much as we want it to be, it's not, because it's a different world out there. You have to embrace change. And it's implementation-oriented. We utilize what are called work plans, and that's the piece that gets the stuff done. We're going to do a little exercise tonight, we're going to do some brainstorming, we're going to pick your guys' brains on what's important. And then it's up to the board and the committees then to take those ideas, flush them out, talk about them, and then create an action plan to get them done. Main Street is a get-it-done organization. I think we put that in our bylaws in Excelsior Springs, as if we had a board that wanted to get it done. All right, so how does a Main Street organization operate? It's a volunteer, it's hard to read, I apologize. It's a volunteer-driven organization led by a working representative board of directors, supported by committees organized around the four-point approach, and managed by a professional staff. That's a goal of the board. So this is how they work, and the Main Street Board, if you had a head staff person, they wouldn't have worked with the board, and then the four committees working underneath. Now, they don't work, in fact, we talked about this earlier, they don't work independently. There are some things that are going to cross. Let's say that the economic restructuring committee wants to create a promotion to bring some new businesses to town. They're going to work with the promotions committee on making that happen. They are going to work together. So board of directors, what is their role and responsibility? They're responsible for the policies of the organization, establishing that legal entity and making sure that that's adhered to. It's a working board, not an advisory board. Many organizations have advisory boards, this is a working board that will be able to roll up their sleeves and get in there and talk about it. They're also responsible for the planning, and most of that takes place in the committees, but the board has to be reviewing that and they approve those plans before work starts. They provide that committee oversight. They're also responsible for the funding and the financial management of the organization. They're also the advocates for the organization, meeting with city officials, meeting with other organizations, always talking about Main Street and selling it to the person that owns it. And then they evaluate. As events and projects take place, it's the board's role to evaluate how the event went or the project went, and what can we do better than that? Kind of that overseeing of the organization. And then they also manage, of course, the allocation. Most Main Street organizations are 501(c)(3)'s. It can also be (c)(6)'s. The difference between the two is a 501(c)(3) is a nonprofit set up for the good of the public. The 501(c)(3)'s should not have members. Many of our Main Street organizations have members, but we should call them something else, because the IRS says if you have a member, they get something in return, and that's not for the public good. (c)(6)'s, which are a lot of chambers, have members. It's technical, just call them partners, but you do want people in, from the public, from the community, invested in the organization. Call them partners, it'll make the IRS a lot happier. Because you are for the public good. Also, the board is responsible for that funding aspect, and there's a funding model that we follow, it's a 30%, 30%, 30%, 10%. I'm going to go through it real quick. I think that's it. Thirty percent should come from the private sector outside of the district. So those would be the corporations and companies that are not in downtown St. Genevieve. Maybe it's also alumni, maybe it's sponsorships for events, maybe it's from your utilities or the endowment. So about 30% should come from outside, from the private. Thirty percent should come from the private sector inside the district, and that would be through your partnerships with your businesses and businesses inside the district. Could also be sponsorships. Could also be, when I mentioned Washington, Missouri, and they have two apartments that they rent, that would be considered income coming from the private side inside the district. The other thing that a lot of our Main Streets are starting to use, it's a special taxi district, it's called a CID or Community Improvement District. It's a self-imposed sales package, and it's on a particular boundary that we set up. We set one up in Excelsior Springs to help fund our organization on the economic restructuring and promotion side, and it'll provide about $40,000. But it's through petitions and through a vote of the folks in the district. Thirty percent should come from the public sector, and that would be Neighborhood Assistance Program, which is a tax credit thing through the state, CBDG, which is Community Development Block Grant, which is also through the state, but through the federal administration by the state, any other tax programs, service agreement with your city, city funding, public improvements, all those sort of things in the public sector. And then the last 10% could come from events, festivals, grants, et cetera. You're probably asking, why is this so? Well, many of the Main Street events take place outside. What if it rains? What if it's a rainout? There went, you know, if that's 50% of your budget, there went 50% of your budget, and how's the organization answer that? So we advise this is a diverse funding model. Many of our Main Streets are not to this point, and they're working on evening it out, evening it out. Washington, Missouri, five years ago, 60% of the budget came from events, and if they had a couple of bad events, that organization would have collapsed. And so you wanted, you wanted a worse funding model, and that's what we promote, and it's a work in progress for the organization. All right, committees. Committees do a lot of the work, and that's where the ideas come from. So committee roles and responsibilities, determine the various overall goals and prioritize those goals. We're going to do a little bit of that tonight. Also developing a balanced range of short and long-term goals. Want some short-term things, you get some quick successes, but you also need to have some long-range ideas also. Implement several high-visibility projects, things that are great for the newspaper to cut on, so you get some good press on those. Also establishing or empowering and monitoring subcommittees. Some committees have subcommittees, maybe there's a big event that takes place, we need a subcommittee for that. In Excelsior Springs, we did a wine festival, and it was a subcommittee on promotions. Some of the responsibilities for committee members, you have to attend meetings, unfortunately, but that's where things happen, that's where ideas are shared, that's where you flush out those good ideas and maybe put on the back corner of those concert venues. You have to know and support the Main Street Approach. Cultivate relationships with other organizations and agencies. Cultivate relationships with other organizations and agencies. You do have to roll up your sleeves. Have to be a team player and looking out for the wins of the organization. And we ask that you commit at least for a year. So that you get the full range of the organization. And most of the time, it's about three to five hours. It's not a huge commitment. And we also ask for you to recruit. Main Street leadership needs opportunities. The Organization Committee. Who would fit good in the Organization Committee? Someone with public relations or communication skills, organizational skills. Somebody that's willing to ask other folks for money. And there aren't a lot of folks that like to ask folks for money. But you, if you have those, you want money. And then also volunteer management. We were talking about that earlier tonight. If you love to vol, if you love to manage volunteers, see Mary. She's looking for someone to help manage the volunteers in the organization. Design usually wants someone who's preservation-minded, maybe has planning skills or design skills. And somebody with attention to detail. For the Promotions Committee, like, planning events. Also maybe have a marketing background, or advertising, or graphic design background. An economic restructuring, have some business sense, maybe some marketing or management experience, maybe strategic planning. So as you're looking at this list, hopefully in your head, you said, maybe intriguing. Because you know we're recruiting volunteers tonight, right? We lock the doors and you can't figure it out. All right, committee chair members. The chair, they have to run the meeting, recruit new members, organize those work plans. As those ideas are coming out, they kind of need to be prioritized and managed. That's the chair's responsibility. Forge consensus. There are some committees in our Main Streets that meet, 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 and never get anything done. Because they can't make a decision. Chair needs to guide that process. Represent to the board, or represent from the board, the mission and vision to the committee. And then represent back to the board, the committee's thoughts. And also, there's a little bit of a cable. If you have an executive director, also responsibilities for that person would be to develop strategies for preservation-based economic development. Manage the administrative duties, of course. Develop and conduct ongoing public awareness and education programs. Access and develop capacity for district businesses. Also help individual tenants and property owners. Help build strong and productive working relationships. And develop a case system to track that profit. If you want to know how you're doing this, are you being successful or are you not? And then represent Main Street at the local, state, and national level. All right. So a designated Main Street community follows a four-point approach and meets the ten designation criteria and becomes officially designated. You have ten criteria. I'm not going to go through all of them. But these are the things that a accredited Main Street organization must follow, must be practicing. And then, let's go to, get that real quick. This is the tier system that we follow in Missouri. An aspiring community is someone that is exploring Main Street. They have a lot of questions, are coming, starting to come to some training programs, learning about Main Street. They think it's something that they want to practice and utilize. An affiliate community is somebody that is starting to practice or has good practicing, but is still building the organization. Which is currently where St. Genevieve is. An associate community, they're almost there. Those ten criteria, maybe they're missing one or two. Or aren't doing one or two fully. And then an accredited Main Street community, they're doing a great job. They're following those ten criteria, they're practicing Main Street. Usually, they're programs that have been around for five, six, seven, eight, twenty-five years. We do a certification process every year. We review them either onsite or through paper. We alternate between the two. And then for Missouri Main Street and the National Main Street Program, they are given their accreditation. So there's a process to follow. And the data that we collect shows, as you move up the tier, the economic impact of a Main Street organization increases exponentially. It's amazing to look at the data and how this system helps those communities to improve their economy. So we take a little bit of economic data for the country. And these just were released two weeks ago in Detroit at the National Main Street Conference. Dollars reinvested. This is both public and private dollars invested in Main Street communities throughout the country since the program has been around, which is since nineteen eighty-nine. Has been fifty-nine billion dollars in investment for public and private. The net gain in businesses, that's subtracting the ones that closed, adding in the ones that opened. A hundred and fifteen thousand new businesses have opened in Main Street communities throughout the country. Net gain in jobs, five hundred and two thousand, a half a million jobs created. Number of building renovations, or as we say, the number of buildings saved, probably. Two hundred and forty-six thousand, that's impressive. And the investment ratio, for every dollar of the Main Street community budgets results in thirty-three dollars of investment from public and private. That's a great return on investment. Let's put some numbers here. All right, these are the tiers currently throughout the state. Our accredited communities, St. Gerardo, Chillicothe, Lee Summitt, Liberty, Warren, Sherwood. And then our associates and affiliates. We do what's called an affiliate grant program. And I'll talk about that in just a second. It's about a hundred and forty communities participating in the Main Street program.
And work currently at a community?
Yes. And St. Genevieve is currently at the affiliate program. So I mentioned those work plans. You have to have a plan. So you focus on a vision. It's outlined by the board. You're driven by a mission. You're directed by a work plan. Which are developed by the committees and approved by the board. And then you measure those results. Vision statements are based on community consensus and describe what downtown will actually be like in the future. Where are we going? What do we want to be? Mission statements talks about who we are and what we're doing. So concise and clear and stand. Here's an example of Lee Summitt's mission statement. To promote the continuing existence of economically strong and diverse Central Louisiana district. Through education, business resources, designs or preservation, and growing downtown space. You have to, you have to decide as a group where you want to go. Then that helps you determine that. Because a goal without a plan is just a wish. Writing it down is half the battle. And that's where the work plan is coming in. And then when you're finished, you want to measure results. Talking about vacancy rates, sales tax, business permits issued, measuring attendance at events, or business surveys, or other ways to gauge that. These are some resources. We have a website for Main Street. National Main Streets has a website, which you're a member, so you have access to all the resources on those websites. Also, we have a Facebook page. Go like us, Missouri Main Street Connection. Go like us on Facebook. We share information, resources, and updates throughout the year. So now we want to get you involved. How can you get involved? In one way that we've been talking about with some of the folks in St. Genevieve, is we offer what's called an affiliate grant workshop, or affiliate grant program. It's a two-year program, and it's a hands-on program where we will work with the community for two years, in the community, hands-on. It's a sixty, forty grant. We pay for sixty percent of it, the community pays for forty percent. So it was ninety-six hundred dollars. The rest of the funds come through us, through sponsorships, partnerships, and also through the Department of Economic Development. We are a 501(c)(3) household, we are. We offer a workshop. You have to attend the workshop in order to apply for the grant. It's June twenty-sixth in Union, Missouri. The grant will be awarded in September, and we will start working in those communities in October. We currently have four spaces left for the year. We can only take so many communities per year. So we have four slots left. And I think we will have about five or six communities applying during this grant. Something for you guys to consider. It's a great program. That's, most of my job is working with communities through this program. Currently working with, I have eleven communities right now. All right, any questions about Main Street? About anything I spoke about? Anything you're thinking about? Anything else you want to ask but we're afraid to?
What kind of expenses are paid for from the grant?
The expenses paid for, there are no other out-of-pocket expenses other than training opportunities at the state conference and at trade's event.
Brand position? Or candidate?
No, I'm sorry. The money would come from the city to our organization to provide this two-year of hands-on programs initially. Yes. The money would come to us, and we would be providing, in that two-year period of time, we'd come to the community a minimum of four times in those two years. That actually ends up being about six times. To provide trainings, board retreats. We can do a brainstorming session or a strategic planning session. I've been going around recently doing funding, fundraising sessions, board roles and responsibilities. All of those things come to you and the community through this program.